Hey, we got to play our cards a week in.
Hey, we got to play our cards a week in.
I'm sitting in car ride. And shelter just hanging out for a wait because it takes forever. And I, I just had a phone radio. And he said, something about. I just heard that all night. Shout the message. That's a tissue. These people are watching because I can see my mother's. He got the Chick-fil-A soft. Twenty in a row. It was, it was like, oh, Peter. Okay, just forever. And but it was like two months, three years, accident or state. So. Being a Georgia, starting celebration act with collaboration at home. He's talking to you. He said, this is a. I was in Tennessee at second day. I think they differ, sir. Why can't I be that smart? Why can't I be that quick, baby? It is. I beg you for, sir. I heard one year, yesterday, that Ned's in Washington. And it's named here. Left is plain. We can open your lung. I heard it. It was cold.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome. Dawson County Board of Commissioners work session. Today's February the fourth, two thousand twenty-one. Welcome to you who are in attendance and those that are logged in with us. We'll go ahead and begin with our new business. First up, we had the presentation from the sheriff requesting office staff. Who's going to zoom in with us? We've been unable to connect at the current moment, so we'll circle back to him when we're able to get him logged in. So we'll go on to number two, presentation of local emergency operations plan update, emergency service director Danny Thompson. Danny.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board. What you have before you is the local emergency operations plan. This plan is required for all the counties here in the state of Georgia. It's also tied to our hazardous mitigation plan as well. They kind of work together and coincide. With that, really, the kind of a brief overview of it. It outlines all of the various fifteen emergency support functions, all of their roles and responsibilities in it. Really, we had to update it because it was time. It has to be updated every four years. And that keeps us in compliance with GMA and enables us to continue to receive grants. Whether it's from the EMPG side of the house, whether it's like right now, we've got several public assistance grants ongoing with the COVID, both from two thousand twenty. And now we just were, had information on one for two thousand twenty-one. So really, it just kind of brings everything together. I know it's a relatively large document that you all have before you. Most of the changes made this year were really contact information. It was submitted to GMA for their approval back in December. They're telling us because of COVID, they're, they're out a little bit, but what I did not want to do is jeopardize us with any grants. So we're going ahead and getting it before you all to get a blessing. Obviously, if there's any significant line item changes that GMA comes back with, we'll come back to you. But this way, we're able to get it to you, get it voted on two weeks from now, and we still stay in the good graces of everything. I'll answer any questions that you may have, but the, the document, I know it's extensive, and I'm sure you have not read all of it, so I won't be issuing an open notebook test in a little.
But my, when I was reading it, my question is, does each person that's listed in there know that they're there and know this point?
Yes.
Of course, to share it and all, and I thought, how, how do you know they're knowing all this?
Correct. So once, once it's approved, we'll send out a final document. If you remember with the hazardous mitigation, part of the consultant's work that they do is, once it's approved by GMA, FEMA, the board, the city council, then, once all the entities sign off on it, we share that information. We usually burn it to a disk, and we make sure that each of the representative officials get it. So again, we'll be. We do. We, we do have meetings regarding that, so that's just part of what we do as far as it goes. So, once it gets the blessing here, I'll take it across the street to the city council. They'll have their opportunity as well to bless off, but the chairman has to sign the document as well for, to move forward and stay with GMA.
Lots of moving parts.
Lots, lots of moving parts, but it's tied to money, so we don't want to ever put ourselves in a position not to, to get the money that do.
It's part of the ten items that Chief Thompson has to keep up, that keeps us in line for even more money than we would normally get in a disaster situation. And matter of fact, we got a letter today.
Yes, correct.
Stating that we had met those obligations. And so, thank you for your work. Very familiar with this document. I wrote it myself a few times. And so, and he's right. The biggest thing you usually see, once you get a document that GMA will approve and FEMA will approve, is name changes. Phone numbers and different things that are associated with the different groups that you see. And, yeah, there's a lot of moving parts and a lot of people that are involved. And you see how well things work when we actually have a disaster. It's because we have a plan that those people have been indoctrinated into, and they know their role, so that they're able to help. Exactly.
Correct. The typical match is seventy-five, fifteen.
Eighty-five.
But if you're in compliance, what it does is it now lowers our match to twelve and a half.
That could be substantial dollars when you're talking about a million bucks in damage. And usually, usually, if you get much of a declaration, you went way over a million dollars in damage.
And we just, we were notified that Tropical Storm Zeta for us was a declared event at the first year as well. So, we've got two public assistance grants that we're working with, and then Tropical Storm Zeta as well. And Laurie Whalen does a fantastic job of keeping in touch and managing those programs as well.
Any other questions?
We were told, Billy was told, we were told one time, we were one of the few counties, and not one of the number one counties, that actually got it in on time and got all ten in. A lot of counties don't, I think there's so many counties in two cities, that I think it's still.
There's still, I'm still saying, the majority of the counties have not met the ten.
They don't meet the ten.
Obligation.
We're one of the few counties in the state.
I know when we accomplished it years ago, I think we were the seventh county to do it.
In the state.
At that particular time. Because I can tell you, I worked on those ten things for over a solid year and didn't do anything else. Good thing I had good help.
It detailed this beginning, but when I was reading it, you know, things happen those that we think will never happen. But you got a document like that, and it, and it dispels out what to do. You've got a lot. If it happened when you're chairman, you've got a lot to do. I thought about you, the close relationship, how important that is. You see how important it is with COVID. So, it's wonderful to have a document. I just want people to know what's in it, because it is so extensive.
Well, and I can say, and the chairman knows this statement very well. In two thousand twenty, we've, we've had these documents in place for many years in Dawson County, and, and those before me have done a good job at paving. But in two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one now, we have exercised many portions of this because of the COVID. We've stood up a masked testing site. We've stood up mass vaccination sites, and these are things that, you know, you know, kind of, oftentimes, they're tabletop exercises that we talk about in those meetings. But we don't actually have an opportunity to always put the plan in place and put it in motion. And this year, we know plan works. We've put it in motion several times.
Other questions? Thank you, sir. Still not hooked in? Okay. Okay. Go on to number three, presentation to amend section two dash one, 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 solicitations thirteen dot B, twenty-five thousand and above sealed solicitations of person policy ordinance. Person manager Melissa Hawke. Melissa.
Thank you. Have my glasses on here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. You have before you in your packet the current purchasing policy ordinance as it stands now, and the requested amended purchasing policy ordinance. There's only one change that we'd like to do. The one sentence that we want to remove is the last sentence in part B, as, as it states here. It is stating that the, if the project is not pre-funded, that the department director shall receive the account information from the director intends to utilize prior to release of a sealed bid. The intent of that sentence was for the department director to go to our accounting and budget manager to have a, an account code set up, which she will do, but she will put no funds in it until it's approved by the board. So that's the intent of this sentence, but it can kind of get a little cloudy, and it's best that we think from finance that it's just removed and leave it at, that it has to be pre, sorry, I can't talk right now. The budgeting code and the, the funds have to be preloaded, and that's the intent of the second sentence, but if it's not preloaded, the intent was, as I said, for that process to get started. But for those that come after us, who wasn't here when we were writing this, and Jeff from the attorney's office, I think it'd be easier if it's just removed for clarity's sake.
Questions from Melissa? Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll circle back to the sheriff, if he's online with us. At this particular time, we'll go back to number one, presentation of request for additional sheriff's, sheriff's office staffing. Sheriff, you with us?
I can hear you, Mr. Thurman. How about you? How about here?
Hear you as well. Hold on, we're trying to get you up live. All right, we can't see you, sheriff, but we can hear you, so if you want to go ahead.
All right. Well, first of all, I appreciate the opportunity to come and present this evening. West for additional staffing. To kind of give you a little background of where we're at, obviously, we've experienced a lot of growth in our county through subdivisions and the residential and through business. Since two thousand seventeen, we have, we've come to you on an annual basis to request additional staffing. Since two thousand seventeen, you have approved in the ten positions during that time period. But I wanted to tell, talk a little bit about where those positions are, where they went to. Since two thousand seventeen, we've actually had what I consider first responders too, in addition. And let me explain that. We did, in two thousand seventeen, we added the chief deputy, who is primarily administrative type role, not necessarily, not necessarily a field operations role. We did add a nine-one-one supervisor, which is obviously in our communication system, as well as a corporal investigator, which is the title, which is an investigator. So we did increase our investigations by one in two thousand seventeen.
Sheriff, I need you to speak up a little bit, if you will.
All right, is this better?
Can you get closer to your microphone? Or turn it up, or whatever?
Let me see if I can do any.
There you go. That's better.
All right. And it's that time since two thousand, we have increased resource officers. But again, these are primarily in our school, necessarily in a first responder type role. We also included stations in two thousand, I believe it was, number under roles.
Sheriff, I need you to stay as close as you can. You're coming and going.
Is this any better?
That's good.
Okay. We did increase. Now, when I, empty positions, those active patrol, responding for service, control, traffic control and direction, things of that nature. And obviously, this year or in late of two thousand twenty, we did add two heat units. And although that does provide us an additional uniform on patrol, these are grant funded positions that deals specifically with traffic enforcement. These are stats, stat-driven positions, and although they, they can respond to an emergency, their primary responsibility is just that traffic. So we do, we are already seeing a great result from this heat unit, and we do hope in time that it will help curb some of our traffic accidents, DUIs, things of that nature. And what I want the board to know and understand too, and this is not anything new, we're unique. Dawson County is unique in that we have no other law enforcement agency serving our county. And what I mean by that is simply no city or county police department, or substantial college, university law enforcement presence in order to provide assistance. We do receive support from GSP and DNR, but as you know, these are, these are across the state, so they're there to help others. But we are unique in that it's us. It's, it's the sheriff's office that are providing primary law enforcement responsibilities. In two thousand fifteen, a staffing study was conducted by the Georgia Sheriff's Association. That study is going on nearly six years old. At the time, the study identified and recommended one hundred and thirty-nine positions, nineteen short of our current allotted positions. The study was based on call volume and data which was collected in year two thousand fifteen and prior. For example, the recommended patrol staffing numbers were based on ten thousand six hundred and seven calls for service. Fast forward to last year, the DCSO received fifteen thousand six hundred and forty-one calls for service. This is an increase of over forty-eight percent over the two thousand fifteen staffing studies. This significant increase in calls for service obviously impacts our nine-one-one calls, criminal investigations, court services, warrants, et cetera. Although the GSP conducts a large majority of our traffic accidents, and we talked about that, in two thousand nineteen, our deputies alone worked one hundred and seventy-five traffic accidents. In two thousand twenty, our deputies worked two hundred and forty-two traffic accidents. That's an approximately thirty-eight percent increase in accidents alone, and that's during a year that we were experiencing a pandemic, and folks were ordered to shelter in place and stay at home. So obviously, our traffic is increasing in Dawson County, our cars, which is obviously placing greater demands on our law enforcement. In two thousand nineteen, sheriff's office responded and investigated two hundred and seven cases of domestic violence. In two thousand twenty, these cases increased to two hundred and fifty-one. So we're realizing a twenty-one percent increase just in the last two years in domestic violence cases. Not sure what the numbers were in two thousand fifteen, but as you can see, our numbers continue to grow. It's important to note that these type of calls as well, when you talk about a domestic violence call or a family violence call, these obviously involve multiple officer responses. And it's more of a time-intensive investigation as well as a investigative role. So these calls, they're, they're becoming more prevalent, and they obviously are longer, they take longer to investigate. We also are realizing increases in criminal investigations. There are four hundred and eighty-eight assigned criminal investigations cases in two thousand twenty. This represents an approximately twenty-three percent increase over nineteen, of which we had three hundred and ninety-eight cases assigned to CID. So obviously, the, the crime that's being committed in our county is translating to additional work on our criminal investigations. Increased calls for service is, is detracting from our officers' ability to be proactive. And simply put, it reduces our effectiveness in preventing crime. This inability to be proactive naturally increases the potential for crime, and as we said, it increases our criminal investigations workload. In two thousand twenty, there were one hundred and twenty-nine DUI arrests in two thousand twenty. Interestingly enough, in January of two thousand twenty-one, and again, I referred to this a little bit earlier in the presentation, with our heat units, our traffic units. In January alone, there were twenty-one arrests for driving under the influence. And taking those trends, if it continues, we may realize a ninety percent increase in DUIs. Again, our county's changing. We're realizing more traffic, more people on the road, more opportunity for these crimes to, to happen. Now, it's also important to note that this does not involve, include GSP arrests. Those, those two thousand twenty-one January stats were DCSO alone. So, but time you factor in GSP's arrest numbers for DUI, it's going to be probably even greater. Increases in our population, businesses, recreation, resulting in more drivers, more opportunity to commit DUI. Obviously, these are just a few stats, board, that I present to you. These are good concrete evidence of our call volume increasing, and the need for additional staffing increasing. A lot of that's just attributed to where we are. Here and now, we've seen in the last few years, residential is booming. We look at Crown Point, for example, Creekstone, Silverleaf, Sweetwater Preserve, Blacksmill Preserve, Nancy Park, the crossings of Dawsonville. These are just a handful of places that where people are now, where they're living, where they're residing, where crime is occurring, where we're dealing with it. If we look ahead, we know that there's more on the horizon, from Crystal Falls to Oakdale to Thunder Ridge to Harry Sosby, and the list goes on and on. So board, basically, I'm presenting to you this evening is that there's a need here. There's a need for additional deputies on, on our streets. It is our plan to take these roles. I'm asking you for deputy positions. These are sworn certified deputy positions, and they will be in a uniformed enforcement type roles, responsive first responder type roles. Currently, we have, we have one opening in the jail, and I have two candidates in line for it. They're going through the process. We will have that position filled in the immediate future. I have two applicants has applied for our one open CID position. People are, the subject is in the pipeline for it. We're finishing up on it, and then we have one nine-one-one operator, which we have several applicants for. So in our enforcement roles in our jail. So in our enforcement roles in our jail, we have people to fill up every last position that we have. So we're in a good position with where we're at in Dawson County. We just have a need for additional staff. So at this time, I'll just ask and if the board has any questions, I can answer.
Sheriff, how many staff are you asking for?
Well, I'd like to ask you for, forgive me. We know that we're, we know that we're 19 short. We understand that that's not reasonable. But we just asked for a good faith effort to get this dialogue going and to get some uniformed bodies on our patrol.
He didn't. He didn't. He just wants to do a dialogue. And I'm okay with the dialogue. I've got some information that I want to share with you. And then I'm going to send this information over to you and then hopefully we can get together and you. And then I've got a request before we take this up for a vote in a, in a few weeks or whenever the board wants to do that. I ran some numbers myself of Dawson, Lumpkin and Pickens County. Sheriff's Department budgets and things such as that. Lumpkin's 2021 budget is $5,800,000 plus. Pickens is 7.6 and yours is 8.4. Lumpkin has 96 employees. Pickens has 94 and you have 122. The population in Lumpkin County, and these are 2019 numbers because this is all I could find. And I know we're going to get some 2020 census numbers here before long, which Dawson Counties will go up as well as each and every other county that I'm going to talk about here tonight. They've got 32,955 in Lumpkin, 32,591 in Pickens, and we have 26,108. Lumpkin has 285 square miles that they cover. Pickens 233 and we have 214. Currently per capita, so what we're spending per citizen in Dawson County, as well as Lumpkin and Pickens and numbers that I was able to get from their people. Lumpkin spends $177.80 per citizen on their sheriff's department. Pickens spends $234.40 per citizen on their sheriff's department. We spend $324.86 per person on our sheriff's department. Some of the other number, and I also contacted, had some contact with Forsyth, Hall and Cherokee, the three biggest counties that surround us. South County has a $52 million plus budget and 244,000 plus people. Spend $213.21 per citizen on their sheriff's department. Hall County, 42,700,000 plus budget, 204,000 plus people. $209.21 per capita. Cherokee, 47,460,000 plus thousand dollars budget for the sheriff's department, 258,000 plus people. $183.41 per citizen. And as you said, in 2017, when you came to this office, the same day that I came to this office, your budget was $6,822,566. Your 2021 budget is $8,481,523. That's a $1,658,957 increase in the past four years. That's 19.6%. Your overall budget, which includes 911, because this doesn't include 911. This doesn't include splosh money that your budget gets and it doesn't include capital. Your 2021, all funds included budget is $10,245,376. When you came to office in 2017, your all in budget was $7,687,803. $2,557,573 increase in the past four years granted by this board and by the citizens of this county through taxation, 25% increase. My, I appreciate the numbers that you provided and here's my request. I would like for you to bring back to this board in the near future, whether that's two weeks from now, or if you need more time than that, then I'm fine. Some statistical data matching the data that I just did. You've got numbers for yourself and your department. I appreciate that. I'd like to see what people of like size like Lumpkin and Pickens are doing as well. I think our taxpayers would like to see that as well. Couple of weeks ago, you stood in this room and you said that you had to explain to the taxpayer the money that's in your budget. Well, I too, as a commission chairman and these four ladies and gentlemen that sit up here with me also have to explain to the taxpayer where this money goes. And so I am more than open to dialogue, but I am a data driven person. And when I see that we spend $324 per citizen, and I even ran the numbers at 30,000 citizens, in case we had 30,000 people. That would be $282.72. Still, we would be the highest per capita providing money to the sheriff's office of all these other five communities. So I look forward to the opportunity to sit down with you, to discuss that and look at some data. I hope you're willing to do that, provide some data. We want you to have what you need. But we also have to be able to justify everything that we do. And I agree with you. You've gotten nine people, I believe it is, in the past four years from this board in different allotments, in different positions. And I'm willing to look at that as this board is and they, and I've said many times at budget hearings and in individual meetings with everybody I've had. You got a need, bring it. Bring me some facts. Bring me some comparisons. Bring me some data. So if you could provide this board with some data. Because right now, even, you know, Pickens County, which is got about 6,000 more people than we do, provides sheriff's service for $90.46 a person cheaper than we're providing it. So I need some, I personally need to take, as I look at this and try to make ends meet with the taxpayers' money. And it doesn't matter where the money comes from. It's all tax money, whether it's splosh, loss, property tax, whatever it is, it's all tax money. So I need data that drives that. You've got your numbers. I'd like to see what some of these other counties that are spending a whole lot less money are doing. And if there's something out there that we're doing above and beyond what these other counties are doing, I'd like to know what that is as well, so that we can compare apples to apples. Because I'm a fact based person. I think this board is a fact based group. And then I'll ask, any comments from either you or any questions you may have?
Sheriff, this is Commissioner Satterfield. I'm too. I go on facts and I try to do my research on it. And I met with HR and I would ask you to please, please meet with them because last year, when I talked to you, we, y'all had 11 positions. This is on position patrol, which HR goes by. 11 positions. And I said, I would support you on combining some of those positions and putting more patrolmen on the ground and on the streets. And then this year, looking at it, you've got seven positions. But last year, you created four positions that wasn't under position patrol. So you took them from somewhere. So that makes you look like you're short of somewhere else. But you know, you want to take care of your men and women and I praise you for that. But you had them as at the end of last year and you took $330,000 from salaries and benefits and moved it to buy stuff. And you could have put people on the roads. And that's, and I, like I said, please, please get with HR. If your numbers are different from their numbers. But I just met with Brad and it was seven numbers this year and 11 last year. Please get with finance. Like I said, I know you can do what you want to your money. You can create positions. But HR needs to know about it and we need to know about it. Because if we're looking at total positions and if these new ones are created and they're not in the position control, then we know nothing about them. So we don't know how many are short. So I'm just asking you to please get with HR.
Let me go ahead and interject here. And first, I'll, I'll go ahead and, and educate you. Tim, on that, I can't take leftover funds and create positions without the guarantee from the board that you're going to fund those positions in the following year. So were there needs and purchases at the end of the year to be made? Yes, there were. So because I can't, I can't turn around and hire someone if the board will be unwilling to, to fund those positions in the next year and cause me to terminate someone. That doesn't, that just doesn't work. Chairman Thurman, you're comparing apples to oranges. And I told you in my presentation, Dawson County is unique. You look at Hall, you look at Forsyth, you look at Lumpkin, you look at Cherokee County. They're chock full of PDs or, or schools that have their own police departments. They may have marshals. They may have city marshals that have law enforcement duties and responsibilities. And I'll even present this question to you. How many people does it take to staff our jail? Does anyone on the board know? Do you know Chairman, how many positions does it take to staff our jail?
I have no idea, but that's, that's your job.
That's part of the problem is that there's a lot of assumptions that are made here without coming and having some real dialogue. That seems to be vacant here. So it's easy for you to sit there and throw a number up and compare us to. And, and I've said it many, many times, don't compare us to Lumpkin County. This is a whole different, this is a whole different game. You see, you see Chairman and everyone on the board sees what's coming into Dawson County, but yet you refuse. You preach and you say time and time and time again that public safety is an obligation. It's number one. Well, you're not proving it. It may come out of your mouth and between your lips, but you're not proving it with your actions. So I'm here to challenge everyone. If you come over here and see what these men and women do, see what our staffing needs are. How about our, how about our courthouse? Do we know when this courthouse was built, did it increase staffing? Yes, it did. So there's so many variables to this thing, but to throw a number out there with the intent just to demean my request for additional staffing to keep this community safe is just absolutely wrong.
Well, Sheriff, I'll tell you this. I'll agree with you that Hall County has police departments. And I'll also tell you this, that the people who live in those cities pay extra taxes for those police departments.
Does it not offset the cost of search?
And they still also pay county property taxes as well. So it is apples to apples when I'm counting about county property taxes. I didn't add in any, any city property taxes or anything associated with that.
You're not answering the question. Does it not offset the needs and responsibility of the neighboring sheriffs?
Well, I don't know that the city of Dawsonville puts that much pressure on your sheriff's office, to be honest with you.
No, you're missing the point. The point is, is that we are it in Dawson County. Lumpkin County, Forsyth County, Hall County, Cherokee County have other resources that we do not have here in Dawson County.
That's the reason I want you to bring me the data. Sheriff, Lumpkin County Sheriff's Office runs calls just like you do. So there's data that justifies that. So if there, if you said you ran 15,000 calls for service, how many calls for service did their sheriff's department run for?
Okay.
Those weren't run by the city of Delonica, who doesn't have a police department or by the college. I want to know, I want to know what their sheriff's department did, what Pickens County Sheriff's Department did. That's comparable Sheriff.
No, no, you're far off the mark. Go to 400. Go to the south end of 400, which you seem to close your eyes to time and time again. And tell me that there's no growth there. Tell me, and I can show and prove to you that that's where the majority of our calls for service derived from. No, it's not, it's not Lumpkin County we're comparing to, and it's not Pickens County we're comparing to. Whether you want to believe it or not, and whether you understand it or not, Forsyth County is pushing into Dawson County. As the elected sheriff, I am responsible to the people and I'm doing everything I can, always being met, for some reason, always being met with contention with this board. I'm asking you and telling you what the needs are. And unfortunately, I have to jump through these hoops and hurdles each and every time to, to, to try to get something to happen, which continues to fall by the wayside.
Well, I can tell you this Sheriff, and you could ask any department head. I ask for justification from every single department head, elected or not, to give me the information that they need so this board can make adequate decisions. And you're no different. I'm asking you for some data. And so I'm willing to talk to you anytime. You can come to my office or I'll come to yours. I've come to yours on more than one occasion to sit down and talk to you about different things. So and I'm still willing to do that. I've not cut you off and I won't cut you off. I think this board, if you look at the difference in the budget when you came and to where you are today, has made some substantial investment in the Dawson County Sheriff's Office, substantial investment. I can tell you that this board worked diligently. You've seen four pay increases for your staff since you came in as sheriff and I came into this position. This board has been very pro public safety. If you'll look where we put most of the money that we've added to different departments, it's been in public safety. And I'll include that in public works who also is public safety, because they have to keep our roads together, which keeps our people safer. So we put personnel, money and equipment. The Splosh Seven is no different. 67% of what we're asking the people to approve is public safety related. So to say that this board has not taken on their primary responsibility of public safety is absolutely not a true statement. And I will not stand here or, and let you say that it is without going back and, and challenge you on that. We can have a sit down conversation and I'm more than willing to do that anytime you want to.
And I'm fine with that Chairman. Since you brought up Splosh Seven and you mentioned that pro public safety. Why, let me ask you this. Why was there not a meeting with us, with the elected officials or anyone on the specific project?
Every department was asked to provide a project list.
Okay.
Every department had ample opportunity to follow up with our Splosh Coordinator over and over again. And most departments did. They continued to call. We had multiple public meetings in reference to Splosh Seven. Our numbers had been changed.
Can you name those multiple public meetings?
I don't have the dates, but we can get them for you.
You had two meetings from what I can tell. You had two joint city, county meetings to discuss the city's.
We discussed them in our other meetings as well.
Okay. But name for me just one time, and I may be wrong. You may prove me wrong here. But name for me one time that you have reached out to have a specific discussion, public discussion on Splosh Seven projects.
I'll have to look up the dates. But we had open public meetings on those that anybody could come to.
I sent you.
I will get you the dates. I will get you the dates for that. I'm not going to get in a back and forth with you here and continue this thing going on and on. I am willing to sit down with you one on one anytime you want to.
No, I, I think it's important for our community to hear this and to get this information out.
Absolutely. That's the reason I provided them information as well as you have.
I sent you a text on January the 7th, asking you about Splosh Seven. You said you hope that it's on the board's agenda on the 21st. Not, not one moment did you say for us to discuss it for anything. You know good and well that you were going to vote on it that evening without it. So there's a lot of issues. There's a lot of vetting issues with Splosh Seven projects that will be made apparent here in the next few weeks, obviously, because our community needs to know.
Absolutely. I'm all in for giving people the facts. Any further questions?
Well, just while we're speaking on Splosh Seven and, you know, I am for public safety. I think it's the most important thing that we do. And I do not, you know, if there's positions that need to be filled, I'm willing to take a look at that. But I wouldn't, and this is just coming from me. I wouldn't want to decide anything on that before we know the results of the Splosh election. Because if it doesn't pass, then I don't know where the money's going to come from for other things. Because just because it's not in Splosh, Splosh offsets our other spending. So that's, that's kind of my thoughts on it.
Other question?
And let me say this too, Emery, and I appreciate you. And I, I hate it that you're coming into a. And let me say this to Emery and I appreciate you and I hate it that you're coming into a, to a contentious conversation such as this. Unfortunately, we have had a need for radio system for years that meets the needs of this agency, but yet. And again, this was prior to your time and your service. We are wanting to build a Neoc Center, a 911 Center, when we currently have room for growth where we are. We need a radio system board. We need one that's going to meet our needs. It's going to meet the needs of these law enforcement officers out here, these fire personnel. We don't need to put the cart in front of the horse and that's exactly what's occurring with this.
And as far as that goes, you know, I'm willing to, I think we've talked about doing a, a study to figure out exactly what system we need with some consultants and stuff. And if the Splosh money is not there to fund it, I'm willing to look elsewhere for that too. And I think the board would be willing to look at that too, because I'm not, just in general, I'm not going to put out a system that won't work. If we spend three or four million dollars on a system and it doesn't work, we just throw the money away. But I want somebody that can tell us, that knows about it, because I've, I've tried to research some and there's so much in that and I'm still trying to learn more about it. But I want to talk to, you know, maybe we can talk to you sometime and some of the other stakeholders that's in it to figure out exactly what we need. But just because it's not in, in Splosh, I'm not going to not fund the correct system. And I think the board would, you know, agree with that too. But just, just because it's not in Splosh, that's not a cap on the, the system. That's not the way that I look at it, because I don't want something that won't work because it's not my life that's on the line out there that's depending on it. And I wouldn't ask anybody to try to depend on a system that's subpar for that.
And I appreciate that.
Any further questions?
Sheriff, this is Commissioner Gaines. I appreciate the opportunity for us to meet the other day and go through some of the different perspectives that we have now and have had over the years and the way that we view things, budgets and processes and things differently at times. And as you and I had a cordial conversation the other day, that I think we both agreed that the most critical component to the way that our operations work is communication.
Right.
And communication is a two-way street. That's us and that's also you and your staff communicating with us. And it's, and we've both been at fault at certain times throughout the years. I think the path forward is, is through communication, is through sitting down and, and understand that tensions are high in this moment. And we see things from, from a numbers perspective and you do as well from your perspective. But the way that we can move this thing forward together, because we are all in the same boat. It's not us fighting you. It's not you fighting us. It's we've got to figure out a way to sit down and communicate and gain a better understanding of each other's perspectives so that we can make the best decisions with the limited resources that the county does have. I want you to succeed. I'm raising a family here. You've got to succeed. Same breath, you've always heard me say, and everybody's always heard me say, that I am an fiscal conservative in the way that I want to be the most efficient operations that we can be. And I want the best stuff that we can afford. And so with that said, my, my commitment to everybody here and you on the phone is, is let's open dialogue and communications so that we don't wind up in a situation we're in now where we're throwing data back and forth. Let's look in concrete facts and sit down and try to come up with a path that, that, and a solution that helps you do your job to the best you can and helps us as a board be able to fund the multiple facets of the, or the community that we have to take care of.
And I certainly appreciate that, Chris. I appreciate your opportunity to reach out. I think our discussions were productive and I, I do appreciate that.
And I would be willing to, Sheriff, anytime to, to meet with you and to, to reach out. I know you said that I'm new on the board and that's true. And I want to learn as much about your budget and your process as I can when I'm making decisions on it. But I don't want to do it in a vacuum. I want to know everything that I can. I'm, like Billy said, I like facts and I like to understand what's going on. And, you know, maybe we can sit down and you can kind of show me some of that and to, to help me to kind of see where we're at in this process too.
Absolutely.
You know, and I'm willing anytime, you know, to do that. And I just want to see, I like, I like facts. I like numbers. And I feel like when I'm making decisions with the county's money, it's, I scrutinize that more than I would with anything that I would, that I would spend. And I just, I hold it to a higher standard and I don't want it to come across that I'm, you know, that we're trying to fight you, but on anything, and I'm not, I mean, but I just want it to, I have to have a justification for it. And if there's something that I don't understand about it, I want to understand that and to be able to work with you to, to show me what you do. Because I've never been in law enforcement. I've never been in an emergency services type position. And I want to understand how that works as I'm making decisions on it.
Right, yeah. I agree wholeheartedly. Very well put and I do appreciate that.
Any other questions? Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the county manager report. Ms. Vicki, you going to give that? No report today. Let's keep our county manager in our thoughts and prayers. He had surgery today. And he's probably still in the process. So let's keep him in our thoughts and prayers. County attorney report.
Look report, but I do have a couple items for executive session, please.
And you're wanting to do that executive session immediately after this meeting?
Yes, sir.
Of moving forward. Okay, so I'll, we do have a need to go into executive session in between the meetings today before we get on to our voting session. So I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session. Motion by Commissioner Foss.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gaines. Discussion.
Do you want to do it in here? Do you want to go to the big training room?
We're going to go to the big training room.
Yeah, okay.
Conference, the training room up there, admin training. Got a motion second. There are no further discussion. Please vote. And that's crew four oh. So we'll go into executive session for a couple of items. We'll be right back. Any, any vote taken after that, coming out of that?
I don't know, depending on your decisions in executive session.
So there might be. But we'll be back in a few minutes. You're more than welcome to stay. Thank you for being here at the work session. Thank you for those that are online as well. But we'll be back in a few minutes from executive session and move into our voting session. Thank you.